Good evening. I'd like to now call the March 13th, 2018 meeting of the Alexandria County Board of Education to order. If you will, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Now it's time for our Pledge of Allegiance. I would ask the following students to come forward and lead us tonight. Addison Eckert, 4th grader, daughter of Jeff and Jessica Eckert. Addison Head, 5th grader, daughter of Jason and Kerry Head. Jeremiah Whitaker, 4th grader, son of Dara Grinston. Meredith White, 4th grader, daughter of Fred and Brooke White.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you guys for doing that. And parents, thank you so much for allowing them to come tonight. Four members, you've had an opportunity to review tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda's printed?
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, are there any discussion? Please vote by saying yes.
Yes.
Any no's? And that carries. Thank you. Is there any public comment? Okay, thanks. Four members, you've had an opportunity to review the consent agenda. What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, are there any discussion? Okay, if you agree with the, please say yes.
Yes.
Any no's? Thank you. Okay, moving right along to reports. And we'll start out with Ms. Crystal Hope, Principal Ellendale Elementary, for our school update.
Dr. Heffner, board members, thank you for allowing me to come tonight and talk to you a little bit about some happenings going on at Ellendale. And we'll be calling our students up to share with you here in just a minute. At your seat, I left a handout, and it starts out, got two colored pages. That is actually the Leader in Me framework. And I know, let's see, my own doctor. This is the framework for Leader in Me. I know you've been hearing about Leader in Me for a while now, but this is actually the lens, or becomes the plate, that we work from. And so above the top is the paradigms that we talk about and have been trained on as a staff. And then the boxes in the middle are actually the highly effective practices that go along with Leader in Me. And so the past two years, we have really focused on those red and green columns, the leadership principles and the leadership culture. And so this year, we are moving into the aligning academics stage, I guess. Formerly year two of Leader in Me, but we did do some things on our own for a year or two. So again, we're moving into that last column where we really are talking about our practices that we're doing. And you'll notice the first highly effective practice is aligning school goals. And so, there we go. With aligning school goals, we really started this year looking at our EOG data from last year and also our BOY data for K-2. So as a staff, we came up with first school level WIGs, wildly important goals. And then we set, each grade level has a WIG, each classroom then develops a WIG, and eventually that goes down to students. So you see how that kind of all fits together. That's the aligning piece of that. And so we have these WIGs posted in the school, we have them posted in our classrooms, we have reviewed these. You'll see on this slide, the two slides on the left, I actually, during an assembly, shared with students after our benchmarks where we stand. We celebrated 5th grade after our second benchmark. You'll see in 5th grade reading, but also in 5th grade math, they are at their goal. And I think they were the only grade level, is that right Addison, I think, Ms. Eckert? I think they were the only grade level who had met both of their grade level goals. So we have celebrated them. But you'll see, that's just an example how not only do the staff talk about the goals, but we're talking about them schoolwide. And then on the right is a, kind of our scoreboard, and how we monitor progress publicly. We have learned that it's not enough just to set those goals, but we have to track the goals. We have to have a cadence of accountability, is what we talk about. And so part of that accountability is having them up. In a lot of areas, we noticed as a grade level on our second benchmark, we, there were a couple areas we took a dip, and then there were some areas that we were close to our goals. So we've had very candid conversations as grade levels about where those goals are. So then we go to the student academic piece, and that's the next highly effective practice. And I'm going to ask my four students, Addison, Jeremiah, Addie, and Meredith, if you will come up. They have brought their leadership notebooks with them. Each student at Ellendale has transitioned from a data notebook to a leadership notebook. And so I've asked them just to share some of the highlights from their leadership notebooks. So kiddos, y'all go ahead and share with us.
Oh, okay, you're going to talk to students.
Let's see the first page.
You might need to be landing in two places.
So what do you think you need to do?
Double check each October, October's the same.
Meredith, were you showing us that, sweetheart? Is that number 5% you're getting correct? Is that what that 95 is in the 89? So is it, so that number is not the percent you're getting correct on the test? Okay.
Okay, so it's an average, keeping up with where your goal is at.
Okay, and that was your score, was it a score?
Let's look at that one.
Okay, okay, okay.
Was it 20, the highest you could go in the exam?
Wonderful comprehension, that's good.
Absolutely, you're such a smart girl.
You did a good job, thank you so much. How you're progressing. That's great. Well, that's very impressive, thank you.
Reading comprehension, uh-huh.
That's a big job.
Yes.
I hope that everyone will someday get, and it helps you.
Good job, young man. Proud of you.
Thank you for coming to our meeting. Thank you so much for sharing.
You want some candy? You can take some candy to your friends.
Enjoyed that. Thank you.
There you go. You have a good evening.
So I hope that allowed you to see that how we've taken the goals from schoolwide and how it really has empowered the students. I had three of the students and then a fourth in my office later after a field trip, and I just asked them, what parts do you want to share of your leadership notebook? And so they decided the parts they wanted to share, and, you know, I asked them, okay, how are the leadership notebooks helping you, or do you like them? And Addison Head said, said it best at the end of the day, she said, "I really like having leadership notebooks." And Addison is a great student, she's, you know, straight A's, lots of reading counts points, but she said, "In the past, I haven't really known what my grades were, I haven't really kept up with where I should be pushing myself to go." And so I think that's, the power of the leadership notebook is, they have set their own goals based on our school goals, and then they're actually tracking their data from the benchmark data to different things, fluency, CBM, SRI. And so every student has the same sections in the notebooks, but they are used differently in the classroom. But just that student accountability piece, I think, has been huge for us this year.
Crystal, before you move on, Meredith did a beautiful job sharing her notebook with us. But there was a part where they had graphed their first quarter benchmark and the second quarter benchmark, and then they had a percentage with each one of those?
Yes.
Was that the percentage of questions that they got correct on that benchmark?
That is. That is their percentage correct. They go back then and have conversations about what the percentages break down to levels 3, 4, 5, et cetera. And then I know some of the students also shared the On It Challenge. We are doing that this year with 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade, and this is just another level of accountability as well. But we pulled them in, actually Ms. Barnes and myself, and went through their scores, EOG scores from last year with the scale score and their percentile scores. And so we talked about how the percentiles were a ranking and percentages and the difference in those. So that was a little bit harder to understand, but I think even more, they have realized that they are competing with themselves for their own growth. It's not just about levels 3, 4s, and 5s, but for some students, growth in a 2 is what we need. And so we've gone back, and if they meet those On It Challenges, then there are some rewards built in. So we've talked about percentage versus percentile. And then the next part of aligning academics in those highly effective practices that we've been working on is empowering instruction. And we've done a lot of professional development this year based on rigor, and I'll be really honest to say, with an EC background, rigor was not something that, I've heard of it, but it wasn't something that I was even comfortable supporting teachers in. And so as Dr. Curry has worked with us and we're doing learning-focused training, we have adapted that at Ellendale to be rigor-focused. And so we've had a lot of talks about how we can integrate Leader in Me with standards, and this is just a format that we've used to get to the depth of the standards, so our teachers have come accustomed to doing that. And these are various slides from different PDs we have done during, we've had our PD days, we've had staff meetings, grade level PLCs, and also we do planning and data days. And so this is just clips from some of the professional development we've done. But the orange slide is talking about learning-focused lesson plan and what that looks like. And again, we've talked a lot about rigor and the definition and myths about rigor, but our, I guess really what I have taken from learning-focused is a focus on the high-yield strategies. And so we really have focused on two, and I know that's hard to see there, but we've talked about distributed summarizing and student collaboration. And so since the fall, that has been something that we have continued to talk about. First, it was implementing, kind of like our WIGs, do we have them present? And then we look at, not only are they present, but how do we make it better, more effective? So our teachers have watched several model lessons. You'll see, that's one of our professional development days on there. I actually gave them a quiz in a staff meeting, I'm sure Ms. Eckert can remember that one as well, because they were students for me that day. But the right little slide also shows that our teachers have done research on effective strategies as well. That's a Freyer model, which is a great model for vocabulary. So just a lot of different learning about highly effective strategies and what rigor means. And the next part of that, about what we're doing, is that there needs to be some accountability. And so these are the things that we've talked about as a staff. I developed a walkthrough tool back in the fall, and I've tweaked it. Again, it started out pretty basic, looking for four things, and then has been a work in progress. I think I'm on draft four now, maybe five. But looking at WIGs, looking at the level of rigor, looking at essential questions, again, those highly effective strategies of distributed summarizing, so not just summarizing at the end, but throughout the lesson, student collaboration, and higher-order thinking. And then, just really quickly, just some examples that I've seen from the walkthrough. We've seen improvement in the use of summarizing as a high-yield strategy. So those are two examples where we went from no evidence of summarizing, 47% in the fall, to only 12% in the spring. And remember, a walkthrough is three to five minutes in a classroom. So, you know, I've really talked about, within a few minutes of being in your classroom, I should be able to tell or see some of these strategies. So you'll see that the summarizing has increased. Student collaboration, we went from no evidence of collaboration being 14%, and that falling to 3% in the spring. And then we actually broke down student collaboration in the spring walkthroughs, so I could see how that was taking place. And in 72% of our classrooms, it was cooperative pairs and accountable talk. And so again, I've shared this with staff, we kind of talk about that, reflect on that, so they own it as well. This is a good example. We started with essential questions, probably in January, with that learning-focused lesson plan. And so we were really looking at, are they posting essential questions? So the next step of that is, are the essential questions rigorous? Okay, so you'll see that we have them posted in a lot of our classrooms, but the next steps is, we've got to go back and look at how to make them rigorous and how to use the essential questions throughout the lesson, for student goals, for them to reflect. And then this is just a quote that I like from Leader in Me, "The ultimate end in mind is for students to develop the skills and mindset that allow them to lead their own lives, be able to work effectively with others, and to make a meaningful contribution wherever they go in life." And I hope that through the leadership notebooks, through a lot of the, just opportunities that they're having, that that's what our goal is. You also have, on the second page, I sent you guys an email, but I want to extend an invitation again, our second leadership day is on Friday. We'll start about 8:15 with some classroom visits. Each classroom is going to focus on WIGs again, so you can see what the classroom goals look like, student leadership notebooks as well. And then we've got some service projects and different exploratories they're going to showcase, and then we'll actually start the program about 9 o'clock with some student speeches and class songs and different performances. So we'd love to have you attend and see a little bit more about things we're doing. Any questions? Thank you, Crystal.
Thank you very much. Thank you. That's very good.
Oh, yes.
Okay, next on the agenda is Dr. Betsy Curry. She'll discuss our school's current update.
Dr. Heffner, Chairman Bowman, and members of the board, I have to get used to who the new chairman is, I was the chairwoman before. I thank you for the opportunity to present to you today. Ms. Hope stole some of my thunder. I was going to talk to you a little bit about learning-focused schools today, so we can skip right through it, but they're doing a great job of implementation there. So we're going to go ahead and we're going to talk about a couple of things that are coming up in the near future that I think you just may need a heads-up on. We are having some curriculum changes, and we learned nothing from when we adopted Common Core and did four in one year, because we're doing two in one year for next year. And we're doing ELA and math curriculum changes. I've had an opportunity to go to an ELA training, and that curriculum is not changing significantly. It will be implemented next year, and if you can look up there, the chart, the assessment for ELA, the new assessment will not be implemented until the year after. So we have a year to kind of transition into that curriculum. A lot of what they've done in the ELA curriculum is they've taken what were really complicated standards, that was a lot of complaint about Common Core, and they've really taken out some of the detail, so that it's not so hard to read. Some of that detail, we've been looking at it as coaches, and we feel that detail is probably critical to really understanding. So we're going to keep that backup document, but use the other one for planning, because it will be easier to understand. The mathematics curriculum, I have yet to go to a training, but will be going to, I think it's next week, a math training. I have two things going on this week too, so my days are starting to run together with all these trainings. But those are only K-8 revisions. And again, I do not feel like they will be significant, but we won't know that for sure until we go to this initial training. I think we'll probably be able to continue to use the same curriculum we're using, which will really make teachers breathe a deep sigh of relief, I think, to not have to change curriculums again, you think?
Yeah.
We also have the Every Student Succeeds Act that will be coming up in the next year or so, and it's just a reauthorization of the elementary education, Elementary and Secondary Education Act. But I've given you a few details on there about the guiding principle, and I've also given you a link to a two-page document, in case you want to read a little bit more about that. And if you look at these emerging initiatives as a result of ESA, these are some things that will be coming up that are just being talked about now. And we have some indication, we've heard quite a bit about the Whole Child North Carolina, where we're really looking at the whole child instead of just academics. But these are the other ones that will be coming up. And you've probably heard of the Innovative School District, that's for the low-performing schools, that they all are operating under the charter guidelines with a superintendent that's been appointed for them. These are some things that we are already doing and things that have proven to be effective, but are compliant with the ESA requirements. Promising practices, we have an EL support team, an English language support team at DPI. We have Read to Achieve, NC STAR, which is a school improvement planning process, which we are not using, we're using one based on our data assessment. Multi-tiered system of support framework, which is a promising practice, but you know that we're well on our way to implementing and being a full MTSS. And data systems, all being there at the touch of a button, so that everything's speaking from one thing to another. Proven programs that are part of our state of North Carolina's ESA plan are NC pre-K, Smart Start, Career and College Promise, Homebase, North Carolina Virtual Public School, PBIS, the NESA system, North Carolina Educator Effectiveness, and the statewide system of support. So you've probably heard all of those proven programs over the last three to five years. Learning-focused schools, this is where I'm going to ask Dr. Griffin to click on a little video clip that I have. You heard Ms. Hope talking about research-based strategies and effective practices, and the way that those are achieved is from a meta-analysis, where they look at thousands and thousands of studies to find out what has the most highest impact on student learning. And so this is a brief little video clip that will explain that for you, better than I can ever explain it, I'm sure.
Before we go too much further, you need to know how we keep that focus on student learning. Where do these strategies come from that we use? And our exemplary practices come from two sources, research-based strategies and our evidence-based practices. And so let me just give you a quick little background about where those originate from. This is a compilation of a meta-analysis that was done that shows you the top research-based strategies and gives you their correlating effect sizes. If you like numbers, if you're into that kind of thing, and I so am, I call it getting my geek on, all right? Anything above a .38 is considered a really good practice in teaching. Anything above a 6.6, you should be doing all the time, it's amazing. So if you want to check out our effect sizes, you can see that what we're giving you is the best of the best. This is what works, this is what moves kids. And doing one of these will give you results, and a lot of us do one of these or two of these at a time. What we want to do is purposely connect and interconnect as many as possible in every practice as frequently as we can throughout our lessons. That is how you move kids, that is how you increase achievement. So if you look at that, if I've already told you a .6 is really, really good, check out number one with higher-order thinking, that's a 1.61. We should be doing that all of the time. And remember what I told you at the beginning? You should be doing it all the time anyway, because 75 to 85% of your standards include higher-order thinking anyway. So you should always be hitting that higher-order thinking. Some common misconceptions that might pop up, distributed summarizing, number two, that's not summarizing at the end of the lesson, that's not just that exit ticket on the way out the door.
Ms. Lingle, can you go ahead and just stop that?
That effect size for just that one-time summarizing, that's just a .
So what you would see, and Mrs. Hope shared this a little bit ago, is that list of high-yield strategies, and anything that has an effect of .38 or more is guaranteed to show at least a year's growth for students. And that's why we want to focus on not doing any of those things that are less than a year's growth for students. And it's all scientifically, mathematically, research-based. So when we begin to really want to see kids doing well, what we want to do is engage them in instruction. It's not about playing with the numbers and teaching to a test, what it's about is engaging them in instruction so that they're learning more. And so you'll see that one of them was student And so you'll see that one of them was student collaboration, because one of the things that I have said until I'm blue in the face, they'll probably all say it with me, but kids need to be engaged not just in listening, but in speaking and reading and writing. And you know that when you have an opportunity to talk to somebody about a problem that you're having at work, and you can problem-solve and brainstorm together, or about your new knowledge, or can hear it from somebody else, that that learning stays with you longer because you're positively engaged and it has meaning for you. So what we're trying to do is make sure that we're using things like essential questions, and there we have a high school teacher with an essential question, and some of the essential questions that I've seen in schools, to really model how we're doing in guiding our instruction, along with the distributed summarizing. So it is kind of a mathematical formula, but if you think about it, this is what good instruction is, and this is what good teachers are doing already, then it makes a lot of sense, because one of those high-yield strategies is relationships. And so you can do everything in the world perfectly, but if you don't have a relationship with that child, then you're not going to have those results. So some of those things that may not show up will be okay if you have that relationship first and foremost, so we can't lose sight of that. And I think that's part of the reason that we've seen such tremendous growth in some of our schools, is from that relationship piece, and quality rigorous instruction, the two combined. So if we look at successful implementation, we know that everything that I have ever learned about professional development in any administrative program, any doctoral program, anybody who's in school leadership knows that if you send somebody off to a workshop and they come back, they're super, super excited, but they don't have anybody to really connect with and talk to, and sometimes that stuff can kind of lose focus. So what we're trying to do is a lot of our PD in-house, so that people can continue to grow and talk, and to keep that at the forefront, because if you want something to be there, you have to inspect it, you have to monitor it, and you have to reassure people that it's happening, and you have to provide positive feedback. So one of the things that we've done, Ms. Lingle, would you click on that second link, or Dr. Griffin, if you could, no, the first one, I'm sorry. Go back. I'm getting ahead of myself. Okay, so this is our walkthrough tool, and Dr. Griffin, I'm just going to have you scroll down through this. What I look at in all the schools, I just was at AC today, and I got into forty-one classrooms, because like Crystal said, it's three to five minutes. If you stay more than three to five minutes, you're bound to see all these things, but then you're not getting a good snapshot of the school. So people will say, but I was just about to get to. And I have to say, but it's okay, because I'll see it somewhere else. And this is a picture of the school and of our district implementation, it's not a picture of a teacher. It's not a reflection on a teacher, it's what's going on in this school on any given day. And so just trying to let people know that, yes, it's only three to five minutes, I don't expect to see everything in your classroom on that three to five minutes, I just expect to see a snapshot of the school when I'm done. So we ask what grade level, and you'll see the things that we are monitoring. One of the other things that we've told principals when we go in in the fall and in the spring is you know what your focus is. You share this data as you see it as effective. If you're focusing on essential questions, then you may want to share the section on essential questions, because every school is moving at a different pace that is appropriate for them, based on what their school leadership team and their principal decides. And with some guidance from us, I think Crystal invited us and said, what do you think the focus needs to be? And we came to a joint decision that it really needed to be on rigor at Ellendale. They were very, very proficient, but they weren't seeing the growth that they needed. And so we were collaboratively with her coach, with me, her leadership team, able to develop a tool and some PD that might help them to go to that next step. And we hope we'll see, I feel like we're going to see good results this year. So if you'll go to that second link now, this is what the results will typically look like for a school. And you all have access to this in your PowerPoint presentation. And what I did was, I took a sample school and sample school data, and I took the names out of the data, because I didn't want anybody, not that anything is less than positive, this is just a brief introduction. And I have the firm, firm philosophy that if you comment on things that are going well, those things will increase and people will do more. And so I make it a point to have eight to ten promising practices that are going on in the school, and that have improved, and one opportunity for growth. So I can say, in all of the things I've seen, you've shown growth here, here, and here, if you want to have a big impact, I would say your next focus needs to be boom. And that might be just my instinct, what I see for that. Okay, if you'll scroll down again, Ms. Lingle's seen these also. This, and you'll have all sorts of examples of this, but if you'll see, right there is the fall, when I went into this school, and about seventy-five percent of the classrooms, I can't see that from here, but there was not exemplary work being displayed. But if you go down to the next one, you will see that that has increased. So you will see a summary there. There is a huge increase in the amount of exemplary work being displayed, and then you'll see a rationale for that. Why is that important that we show exemplary work? Because the other part of providing this kind of feedback is, if you want people to do something, they need to know why it's important and how it impacts instruction. Because I know that as intimidating as this can be, if it's not presented well to the staff, if they know what to do, and if they know it's research-based, and if it's going to improve instruction, I don't believe we have a staff member in this entire system that is not willing to. I think sometimes it's just we can't get out of the weeds to see what that immediate impact thing will be. If you'll scroll down again. These are about walls that teach. And you can see, this is an elementary school, typically our elementary schools have excellent anchor charts and walls that teach. Seen a huge improvement in our middle schools, and I saw a huge improvement today at the high school, so I was very pleased to see that. Let's scroll down again. This is student writing, is it aligned to grade-level standards? Look at the huge difference there, because I was not seeing a lot of writing when we first went in, and writing is the highest form of conceptual understanding. And you know that, Ms. Hardest, I'm sure knows that, if you can write about it, you really understand it. If you can talk about it, that's much better than just being able to regurgitate it on a test. Student work falls into the following categories of rigor. This is the way that we've studied rigor in the system over the last three years. You'll scroll down to the next page. This is another way that we look at the components of rigor, and you can see increases. The most important thing, if you scroll down again, is the summary comments. And again, promising practices, so scroll down. And like Ms. Hope, I changed this a little bit every time I go, the format, just because I want it to be more accessible to folks. Go ahead and scroll down, that's Daggett's rigor relevance chart. This is levels of engagement. When we're talking about engagement, what we're talking about is kids who are authentically engaged. That means they are loving it. These are the kids where you go into the classroom, it's time for lunch, and the teacher can't get them to leave their desk, because they're so excited about the learning, and they're jumping out of their seat trying to share. So I hate to see that stifled, but I understand the need for classroom management. But then you go to the next level, which is compliance, and I was a very compliant child. I did things because I wanted that good grade, because I wanted the extrinsic reward. I wanted my parents to be proud, I wanted my teachers to be proud, and I wanted that pat on the back. You also learn at levels there, but not as high as if you are authentically engaged. You know that, again, if you enjoy the learning, and we can create those environments for kids. Then the next one is ritualistic engagement, where they're just engaged to avoid trouble. So I don't know who, but maybe some of you might have been ritualistically engaged in school, where you didn't want to get your knuckle slapped. So you would do what you were told because you were afraid of getting in trouble, not because you wanted that award. And then there's those students who are in retreatism. And unfortunately, we are seeing more of that, and these are your traumatized kids that are sometimes sleeping in class, or they just can't get their mind on it. And the sad thing is, is I can go into almost any classroom, and I can see one or two kids in retreat, that no matter what, that the teacher could be doing cartwheels, and they still might be in retreat. And then the occasional child in rebellion. And so I might mark on the page that there were three kids in rebellion. Rebellion is not the kid throwing papers, and I might have seen that three times across the entire school, or throwing things in the classroom. Rebellion is any child who is not engaged and is disturbing the learning of others. That's active rebellion, because they are trying to take the focus off the learning. So when we think about kids that are rebelling, a lot of times it's because they can't do the work. So understanding why they're rebelling helps us to get them back into not rebelling, because they're trying to change the focus away from the instruction. They're the class clowns, that's rebellion, that's not retreatism. They're the ones that are disturbing other people. So this is kind of a summary for you to look at, so that when you see the feedback that we're giving to schools, you see what type of things. Because I'm sure you sometimes hear, Dr. Curry was at our school today, and she was walking all around with her little iPad, taking all these notes. And what I've tried to explain to people is, we are monitoring implementation of stuff that we have spent a lot of money and time and energy on, and it's stuff that makes things good for kids. And if engagement is high, our kids are going to do well, and they're going to feel really good about doing well. And I just could not be more tickled with the progress we are making just on these walkthrough tools. And I share them with the school's liaisons. It's just, it's a fun thing to do, but it takes a lot of time. And that's also where I get the Facebook posts from, is being in the schools. And the other day, I made a mistake, and I called one, I said it happened at Sugarloaf, and actually it happened at Wittenberg, because I had like three visits to try to get up to Facebook, and sometimes the pictures all start to run together. So that's it for me, but do you have any questions for me?
I just appreciate the monitoring and the outreach into the schools as a rebellious school.
Not you.
It's amazing, it's amazing.
Thank you. I really enjoy it, we've got phenomenal, phenomenal teachers, I just cannot say it enough. They just consistently rise to a challenge despite having less and less to work with, from resources to even some of the students we have coming in that are just harder to reach, but that makes their jobs so much more important. And they just bend over backwards to accommodate those students and to take them out of rebellion and understand why they're there.
And I think that the Facebook posts are wonderful, because the community doesn't have the chance we do to get into the schools and see the great things that are happening, but they can see those through those Facebook posts. And I thoroughly enjoy reading them.
Yeah, that's one of the good things about Facebook. That's what it was supposed to, in my mind, be designed for, is to celebrate good things and to connect with people in a positive way, but, so I'll keep doing the good stuff.
You continue to do those.
Well, I have a funny to tell you. I spent some time today with Chairman Bowman and Mr. Roney and several others, and I was informed that Eagle Two was at the high school. So they've named us, and it was funny to hear, I knew that Eagle Two was going to the high school today.
They knew Eagle Two was coming, it shouldn't have been a surprise.
But I was told your whereabouts, so thank you for being at the high school today.
Well, I've got another funny for you. As I was getting ready to leave, I saw Mr. McCarrer in the hallway, and I said, I've been in forty-one classrooms today. He's like, how did you do that? I said, three to five minutes, you got to be on it, I've got like seven thousand steps, that's the most I've done for a while in one day. And as I was walking, I went into Doug's, or Mr. Roney's office to grab my things, and who comes in the office, Mr. Roney, but I hear Mr. McCarrer behind him saying, Eagle Two is leaving. Not so quick, Eagle Two is still here. Busted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Beth.
Chair Bowman?
Yes.
Would you mind to excuse our young guest, that they might be hungry.
That's true. One of them's sleepy. I'm with him. Yes, if you guys, if you guys want to go on, for sure. Thank you so much for coming, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along to Dr. Hefner with the Award of Honor Guidelines and nomination form.
Thank you, Chairman Bowman. I shared this at the February meeting, but the deadline to submit a nomination is nearing as that deadline is Friday. And I just want to review again that the Alexander County Board of Education has established the Award of Honor in order to recognize those individuals who have made exceptional contributions to Alexander County schools. This award represents the highest honor that the Board of Education can bestow. Criteria for the selection of this award shall be based on exceptional contributions to the Alexander County school system or any of its individual schools in the areas of academics, athletics, administration, student achievement, or community service to the schools. The contributions may include recognition on a regional, statewide, or national level, as well as local notoriety, and shall have allowed our children the chance not only to grow and meet their full potential, but to excel as well. The final yardstick by which all nominees shall be judged as to the merit of his or her application is the positive effect on the quality of education in Alexander County as recognized by fellow students, teachers, administrators, and the community in general. The guidelines are, a committee shall be established to receive and screen recommendations for this award. Neither current Board of Education members nor current school system employees are eligible for the award. The final decision shall be made by the Alexander County Board of Education. Nominations may be made from the second week in February through the second week in March of each year. Nominations will be kept on file for up to three years. Each individual nominated must have a minimum of three letters of recommendation by non-immediate family members. The award shall be given annually at the time determined by the Board of Education. And lastly, the nominations, our nomination forms are available at the Alexander County Board of Education office. And my little tidbit here, make some nominations, please.
Thank you. And we will continue as Dr. Hefner with her superintendent's report.
Board members, you have this attachment within your agenda as well, but I do have several things to talk about tonight. The first is a reminder about the school visit that we have scheduled to Wittenberg. That was scheduled for Monday, March twenty-sixth, that will be here before you know it. We're going to meet in the school's office at eleven-thirty that day, and I would ask you to mark your calendars and make plans to attend. Mrs. Hope mentioned the Leadership Day invitation, she gave you another one, but you also received one to Hignight Elementary School. Ellendale's Leadership Day is scheduled for Friday, beginning at eight fifteen, and I just want to say that both of these days will be opportunities for the schools and the students and staff to shine, and I hope that you will make plans to attend. Alexander Central High School is hosting the State Student Council Convention this weekend. The event is scheduled for Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Your attendance is requested for the opening session, and that's scheduled for Friday evening, beginning at six in the auditorium. I would like to recognize board members in attendance as I speak during the event's kickoff. And if you will be able to attend just that opening session for that state convention, would you please let me know by Thursday, and I'll be looking for you so that we can sit together for the opening session. The Budget Committee is scheduled to meet tomorrow evening, starting at five-thirty. We're going to meet in my conference room. We will be discussing budget projections for the 2018-19 school year, the five-year facility schedule of repairs and improvements for the system, as well as preparing our budget request for the county commissioners. If Budget Committee members have specific questions or topics that you want to talk about tomorrow as we meet, please let me know as soon as possible, and Sharon and I will do everything that we can to get what you want to discuss together. We are going to have a new web hosting system for the Board of Education policies beginning April first. The North Carolina School Boards Association will be hosting the policies, and it will have a slightly different look. The School Board Association currently hosts sixty-five school systems, their policies, throughout the state, and I would like to show you an example at this time of what these policies will look like once this change is finalized. Dr. Griffin, if you can help us. Okay, and I can't see that far away either. Sharon, can you help me through this, since we've worked together on this?
These are the sixty-five school systems that have the policy, and the institution is going to look up, I know state school.
Okay.
And this is, there's three, actually, three different patterns you can And this is, there's three, actually, three different patterns you can have, and we chose this one. And the policies are listed on the side, and then you can click if you know the 2,000 policy or 4,000 policy. And the policies come up, and you can choose which one you want to read. If you want to click on one, then they can see, and this is for right here, the book. Also, there's a search bar at the top, so if there's a particular subject someone is searching for, they can find policy.
A little bit of the terminology is different as far as in our policy manual. If you have a policy that has a form attached to it, it's called a form, and in this particular format, it's called, I think, an exhibit. And then there was one other slight difference.
Well, oh, Spanish.
Yes, yes, yes.
If it's a Spanish document, it will have a S.
Okay. So this online web hosting service reduces the administrative workload, but more importantly, it reduces potential legal problems associated with relying on inaccurate or outdated policies. I think that this certainly will help us. We'll have just a little bit of a transition, I'm certain, as far as with anything new, but the format itself I find more appealing, and I think that in the long run, we'll find that this certainly is better for everybody, as far as even trying to search for a policy. There'll be a link on our website to this. Is that the way that'll work?
It will be, it will be in the same place that the next one.
Okay.
You just go to this.
Okay. Okay, good. It just has a different look.
Okay.
Okay. And then the last thing that I want to mention, I just want to say thank you to each of you for attending our recent Award of Honor celebration for Mr. Hope. Again, I reiterate that nominations will be accepted through Friday, that's March 16th. And I would ask you, as board members, to encourage nominations, and because we have a lot of former employees that are very deserving of this special award, and it certainly was special to recognize Mr. Hope. Do you have any questions? Thank you, Chairman Bowman.
Now, we're going to unfinished business, and I'll recognize Sharon McCaffrey for proposed policy revisions, the third reading.
I'm very glad to bring these policies back for the third reading tonight. This is, this set of policies have probably had more, well, I know, they've had more revisions than any other set of policies before, maybe all policies collaboratively since I've been here. But we, I would request that you approve the policies for the third reading, and if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Move to approve.
Just a second.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, if you approve these, please say yes.
Yes.
Any noes? Thank you, and that passes. We'll continue with Ms. McCaffrey to the proposed revisions on the first reading.
Tonight, we have a policy for the first reading that we realized that was outdated and needed to be revised, and that is board member elections. And we bring that to you for the first reading, and if you want to, we will bring it back next month.
Board, what's the pleasure? We want to return in April or when, but...
It's kind of statute-bound, so I move to approve.
Okay.
Pretty cut and dry.
I got a, I got a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any noes? Thank you.
Right, thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, Dr. Hefner will be presenting Ms. Macy Jones's Head Start Report, the refunding applications in Ms. Jones's absence.
Yes. Thank you, Chairman Bowman. In this particular section of the agenda, you have two attachments. One is the self-assessment for 2016-17, and I would ask you to take a look at that. This is for information only. All that we need is just your acknowledgement that you have received the self-assessment, and if you've had time to review it, do you have any questions? You note that each of the areas, there was a place in each summary where the strengths and weaknesses were noted, and a self-assessment is certainly always good to monitor your progress. Okay? Then the second attachment. Macy does need approval to accept this budget. It is part of her refunding application, and she needs this approval by April 1st. So again, you have a copy of the budget. It's in the form of a pie chart, and then an additional page. She wanted me to reiterate to you that it does not include COLA or any other increases that might be coming, and she said, if indeed those things occur, that she'll come before you again and make the appropriate revisions. But she did not include those, because she doesn't have that information at this time.
You said you needed approval on this?
Yes, a couple of other things that I just wanted to mention within that particular attachment. She said that the goals have not changed. The only changes that are planned is to blend NC pre-K and Head Start classes for the 2018-19 school year. And what that means is, is that she will reorganize those so that the three NC pre-K classes are standalone classes, and they are, let me get to that part of the attachment. The standalone classes for NC pre-K would be located at Taylorsville, Hidnite, and Bethlehem, and then that allows for all of the Head Start classrooms to be clustered together, to have three Head Start classrooms at Stony Point and three Head Start classes at Wittenberg. So, and other things that she wanted me to share, that was for information only, and the only thing that she needs action on tonight is approval of that proposed budget, with the understanding that if additional information becomes available, she'll come before us again with revisions.
I move to approve.
Can I second?
Motion, I'll second. Is there any discussion? If you're ready to vote, and if you approve this, say yes.
Yes, yes.
Any noes? And that passes, thank you. Next, we're going to recognize Dr. Bill Griffin for the approval on school safety plans.
Chairman Bowman, members of the board, Dr. Hefner. Last board meeting, I presented to you five components of our school safety plan that are pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 115(c) -105.27. They'll be embedded into our school improvement plans for the years of 2017 through 2019. I respectfully ask that those be approved this evening, if you've had time to review those documents.
Okay, board, you've heard the recommendation. Do you have a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any noes?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, the board will now enter into closed session pursuant of North Carolina General Statute 143-318-1186. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone, for coming.